Good morning and welcome to the January 6, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Congratulations, we have made it to 2021. It's super exciting. We are streaming this morning's meeting live on KPTS Channel 8. We are also on the county's Facebook channel and YouTube page, and we are also streaming this meeting live on our website as well. Commissioners still have the plexiglass barriers between them. Staff are socially distanced in the room. We also have our masks. We'll be operating conference lines or meeting via Zoom this morning as well to make sure that we have limited contact. This morning, I'd like to share a video about Calm Care, and after the video plays, we'll have our Strategic Director, Strategic Communications Director, Akeem Ashford, come up and talk about some of our new initiatives.
Today, more than ever, we're finding it more and more difficult to cope with the world around us. But there is hope. Feeling this way is more common than you might think. In fact, one in five adults in the United States experience mental illness. One in 25 U.S. adults experience serious mental illness. And 17% of youth between the ages of six and 17 experience a mental health disorder. The statistics are troubling. Depression is the leading cause of disability worldwide. People with serious mental illness have an increased risk of chronic disease like diabetes or cancer. 50% of all lifetime mental illness begins by age 14. 19% of U.S. adults with mental illness also have a substance use disorder. One in eight of all visits to U.S. emergency departments are related to mental and substance use disorders. Suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the U.S. and is the second leading cause of death for people ages 10 to 34. The average time between the onset of mental health symptoms and treatment is 11 years. It's important to know the signs so you can seek treatment early. Common signs and symptoms can include feeling very sad or withdrawn, excessive use of alcohol or drugs, significant weight loss or gain, drastic changes in mood, behavior, personality, or sleeping habits, intense worries or fears that get in the way of daily activities, severe, out-of-control, risk-taking behavior that causes harm to self or others. We all need help at some point in our lives, and it can be difficult to take that step to find the answers we are searching for. Calm Care seeks to reduce the statistics and help everyone struggling get back to the lives they want to live. Calm Care can help you or those you care about. You are not alone.
Chairman, good morning.
Good morning, Doctor.
Commissioners. Akeem Ashford, Communications Director. Sedgwick County is really doubling down on improving the mental health of those in here in Sedgwick County. It's listed as our first legislative priority for our 2021 session to increase funding to support Calm Care for Sedgwick County. Many of you have heard about Calm Care, many folks have not. We hope this video that you just watched reaches those who really need those services that Calm Care provides and offers. I'd like to thank Commissioner Cruz for her vision on this video, Joan Tammy, who's also on the phone, Chantel Westbrook, and our very own Tanya Cole for helping to bring the voices behind this video, behind this video, to life. I'd also like to take the time to recognize Heath Balderson with Intake Studios. He and his team worked around the clock for the last three weeks to actually make this video and create it and bring it to reality. We'll release this video using social media in our partnership with local television stations and to get this message out to the masses. We will also use this as a tool with our lobbyists during the legislative session in Topeka to increase awareness about Calm Care of Sedgwick County and hopefully bring more funding to the organization. I'd like to allow Joan, who's on the phone, a chance to say a few words if she'd like.
Okay, sure. Welcome, Joan. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, community. Joan Tammy, Executive Director with Calm Care. I just want to take a moment and say that we know that many in our community are struggling with depression, anxiety, increased substance use, and any other mental health issue, and for some, it's become overwhelming and difficult to manage on a daily basis. So if you or someone you care about are unable to handle the emotions that you or they are experiencing on their own, we're here to help. We have crisis services, be it by phone or in person. We have therapy services that can be delivered in person or via the phone or telehealth over the Internet. We're really here to help youth and adults. Mental illness, I just want to emphasize that mental illness is not a character defect. It is a brain disease that deserves the same attention and priority as other physical illnesses. So please know that you're not alone and we're here to help. You can access our crisis services any time of the day, 24 hours, seven days a week, at 660-7500. The information is on the county webpage and the Calm Care webpage. If you just need someone to talk to once, we're here. If you need services more often, we're also here. We just don't want you going it alone. Thank you.
Joan, thank you much for, and Akeem, thanks for the video and all the people that put this together. Joan, thanks for being available, and 660-7500 is the key number for your group. So thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for helping on this, and the others. The Commission, I think, is fully supportive of getting this message out. It's part of our legislative platform, as you mentioned, and we're trying to make strides there. We tried what we could last year, and we'll try more this year. So, thank you. Any other comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I think the most important message at this video is the very first graphic. How are you, how have you been feeling lately? And realizing that this service, the Calm Care service, that every single person in this community pays for is for everyone. It's not for just people who don't have the financial resources to pay for it, and I want to make sure that we really reiterate that fact. Thank you to Akeem. You didn't thank yourself, but thank you for putting this together and helping us all collaborate. We worked over the holiday to get this done, and so I'm excited that we were able to share it today. Thank you, Commission, for allowing us to show this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you much. Don't see other comments, so appreciate it again. Welcome back, Kate.
All right. And on the agenda this morning, we have several meeting minutes, a proclamation declaring National Mentoring Month, and you'll receive a report from the Sedgwick County Zoo. So Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
Okay. Kate, thank you. Happy New Year to you as well.
Happy New Year.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the first meeting of 2021, today Wednesday, January 6, for the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Just out of respect, we know Dr. Minz is in waiting. After the proclamations and the minutes, we will move for a new off-agenda item before we get into new business, just to let, so we would do some COVID-related information. Okay, with that, call the order of business. Madam Clerk.
In vacation, to be led by Rajan Zed with the Universal Society of Hinduism, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, Rajan.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My hearty thanks to Chairman Meitzner, Chair Pro Tem Cruz, and Commissioners Glasscock, Dennis Howell, and Manager Stalls for scheduling me to read invocation for the great county of Sedgwick. I shall be reading in Sanskrit from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE, and then interpret in English. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvaha Tatsavitavare Nam Bhargo Divasya Dhimahi Diyo Yo Na Prichodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamya Thamsoma Jyotirgamya Mritiyor Mamrathamgamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada Saktastatham Karam Karma Samachara Saktoh Hacharan Karma Paramapnoki Purusha Karma Nevahi Samshiti Mahshita Jankada Ya Loka Sangaya Hamevapi Sampashankar Tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do you do work with the welfare of others always in mind? Om Sahana Babtu Tahanobnattu Sahaviren Karbabhai Jasvi Navadita Mashtu Ma Vidvishabhai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. No obstacle arise between us. Samneva Samna Hirdhniwa Samnamastu Vomano Yetha Vasu Sahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts, may your spirits be at once, that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om. Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace unto all. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's raise the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Rajan. Madam Clerk. You bet. Happy New Year to you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Glasscock?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't think we have anybody here to speak, and so nobody had signed up, but we did receive a handful of emails from the public agenda portal. Anybody got any questions or comments about any? Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I don't really, there was one question, the very last email response. I would hope someone can answer that question, so we'll need to get those answered. Thank you.
Okay. So the communications can hopefully get that answered to that last email that we received. Okay, with any other comment, I'll make a motion to receive and file the public agenda comments.
Second.
Put a motion in a second. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration Minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of November 18, 2020.
Commissioners, if it's all right with you, I'd like to combine all of these four minutes. Out of respect, Commissioner Glasscock, you were part of some and maybe one. I could, we can do them individually, or if we do them as a...
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we approve Items A, B, C, and D, which is November 18, the 24th, December 2, and December 9.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve those minutes. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Say.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you, Commissioner Glasscock. I meant to catch you before the meeting.
Mix it easier.
Okay. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item E, proclamation declaring National Mentoring Month.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas children who are mentored have a greater success of finishing high school, going to college, building lasting relationships, increasing their social and emotional development, strengthening and growing our communities for the positive, which will increase our economy in our own community and throughout the United States. And whereas the number of children who need mentors has been increasing throughout our community at an alarming rate, and many of those children would be more successful members of society and have a purpose-driven life if given the opportunity to have a mentor. And whereas many of these children are products of single-parent homes where the parent works, leaving the child feeling as if they are alone. And whereas Youth Horizons is a faith-based Christian ministry whose mission is to empower children and their families to be healthy and productive members of society and to create an awareness of the needs of at-risk youth, with a vision of breaking the cycle of fatherlessness through mentoring throughout the community and school-based mentoring. And whereas Youth Horizons recognizes and appreciates our current community advocates, mentors, and their proteges while actively recruiting new members and developing new partnerships within our community. Now, therefore be resolved that I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Mentoring Month in Sedgwick County in the hopes that people of this county will open their hearts and accept the call to become a mentor for a child within our community.
Okay. I will second that motion. Thank you for reading that proclamation. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you. And it looks like we have Robert Garner with Youth Horizons here to accept this proclamation. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, Robert. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to raise awareness about National Mentoring Month. I mean, it is so essential that we all work together in the community to raise the level of awareness, and I'm just grateful for this opportunity. I stood before you last several months ago with another project, and I just appreciate your support. We recognize, as a mentoring organization, that there are others doing this priceless work. Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Boy Scouts of America, Real Man, Real Heroes, there are so many organizations in the trenches trying to create an awareness. We are super excited because we're a little different. You know, we are unapologetic in our work as a Christian organization and who seeks mentors from the church, and we will continue to do so. And again, thank you for the opportunity and for your commitment that you have to this work and raising awareness for mentoring.
Thank you and appreciate the care package that you dropped off this morning. There's a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Our pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here today. I wanted to say I appreciate what Youth Horizons has done in this community. Of course, this is not just about Youth Horizons, it's about a lot of other organizations that do similar things as well. And I love, I love the fact that there are these organizations out there. It has impacted our family. I wanted to share that. Back in 2016, I was, I was able to honor Youth Horizons Ernest Alexander with my Chairman's Award in 2016. That was a great event, and I'll never forget that he certainly deserved that, Youth Horizons as well. But a couple of my kids are mentors.
Yes, they are.
And their proteges have become part of our family, and we love them. And to this day, they are welcome, and we take them as almost like a son or a daughter in our own family. So we love them, and we appreciate the chance that we've got to get to know these young people, and it has really made a huge difference, I think. So I wanted to say, I love what you guys are doing. Thank you, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, we don't, I don't see any other comments, so appreciate it.
Okay. Have a great day.
Happy New Year. Thank you for all the work you do in the community.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
New business.
So before we go to the Item F on new business, I'd like to, as stated at the beginning of the meeting, I'd like to make a motion to do an off-agenda item related to all things about COVID.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And I'll hand it over to Tom, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission, for considering this off-agenda item this morning. There's a few things that have come up within the last few days concerning COVID, so there's actually four parts to this agenda item. First up, we'll have Dr. Minz, and actually Justin Wagner will get up. He has issued a new health order for the community effective, or it's actually signed today and will become effective on the 9th, and Justin will cover that very briefly, and Dr. Minz also has a statement to make there, and of course can answer any questions from the Commission. Then Kate will take the podium and talk about a new storyboard feature on our website, which will begin to help us track vaccines within the community. That is now the next stage of the pandemic that we'll have to monitor. And then Tim Kaufman will get up and talk about logistics and operations of vaccinations as best we know from the state of Kansas, and will cover some of that. And then I think while Kate is up, she's also going to talk about the town hall meeting tonight that we will have at 5:30, and she'll mention what the theme of that's going to be. So with that, Justin, please.
Good morning, Justin.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor, here to talk about Dr. Minz's new order. As Tom Stoltz noted, it was signed and issued today, and it will be effective on Sunday, January 10. The content of this order is really the status quo for what's in place now. It includes Dr. Minz's most recent order as amended by you on December 9. There's no substantive changes from what's been in place since then. This order will just begin at the expiration of the other, the current order, which goes in place, which expires on 11/59 on January 9, and would run through February 6, so it would be for four weeks. At the will of the Board of County Commissioners, you can seek to review, amend, or revoke this order. There's no requirement to do that, but that's certainly something you can do. I'd be happy to stand for any questions on this. If you do not have any questions, I'd hand it over to Dr. Minz to make any statement and answer any questions you may have as well.
Okay. I don't see any questions at this point. Good morning, Dr. Minz. Welcome to the meeting. Thanks for all you've been doing, and Happy New Year to you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Good morning. As you all know, I am the local health officer for Sedgwick County. I'm here today to discuss where we are at in the community in terms of our efforts to control the rate of this infection in our community. In this new year, we're somewhat optimistic. Things have improved from what they were in late November. As you recall, we had hospital authorities come to us, and we're very alarmed about the rate of increasing patients and the number of patients in the hospitals, almost to the point of overwhelming the hospitals. Fortunately, that trend has not continued, but we still have some things to do. Our percent positive tests have declined over the month of December, and we are down from where we were at a high of 21.9% positives to our most recent is around 12.5, although that is a, that number could vary as we get more data in from that week. But anyhow, that is certainly considered a positive trend in our community. While our positives are trending down, the amount of people still in our hospital system is at an alarming rate. Our local hospitals are seemingly bursting at the seams with COVID-19 patients. In my regular conversations with our hospital physicians, they continue to express to me their concerns about the capacity and staffing levels, and even though it's less than it was, it's still at a very critical level. I know the hard work and care that our healthcare workers provide every day is very important to controlling this, the mortality rate in this terrible pandemic. I did discuss with some of our ICU physicians earlier this week about how things, their perspective on how things were going. They told me last weekend was a very busy weekend with admissions. And interestingly, many of the admissions that were coming in were family members, being two family members from the same family being admitted, and the only source of infection the family members could come up with was family events over the December 25 holiday. So I'm a little tentative now about not only that holiday, but then the subsequent January, December 31 holiday, and we need to see what that does to the numbers, and that's one reason I'm being a little cautious before we lift any of the restrictions. We have had two major holidays, and I think we have seen some increase in cases just in the last few days because of that. While our testing numbers are down, remember that one of the best tools we have applying this coronavirus in Sedgwick County is our testing. We offer free sampling and testing on Monday through Friday at the Extension Center, and you have an option for writing a saliva, oral, or nasal sample. In addition to the number of positive cases being down, however, the number of tests that have, people have come to get is down too. I assume that was somewhat due to the distractions of the holidays, and I would suspect that particularly the asymptomatic people were less likely to take time to go get tested because they had no symptoms. And so it may be that the numbers are down because we have fewer people who are in the asymptomatic phase coming to get tested because they didn't feel motivated to do so with the other distractions going on in the month of December. So we will see now that the holidays are over, if the number of people getting tested rises back to where it was, and hopefully that percent positive will stay where it is. But percent positive tells us we still have the virus circulating in the community. Since I last spoke to the Board, we have added other tools to our toolbox. As you know, our community is now vaccinating people according to KDHE and CDC guidance. I'm proud to say that, I guess I should say, I'm glad to say that I got my vaccine two weeks ago today, and I would tell you, it was very innocuous. I had some mild tenderness, but certainly no serious side effect, and certainly the mild tenderness is worth the protection I hope this provides. To date, more than 7,000 doses have been dispensed in Sedgwick County, being mostly our healthcare personnel on the front lines fighting this COVID pandemic, and also hopefully people in long-term care facilities will be getting vaccinated soon. The Health Department is definitely following the vaccination schedule provided by KDHE and CDC. The vaccine rollout was developed to ensure that healthcare workers and those who are in direct contact with COVID-19 patients would be able to receive the vaccine first. And secondly, our personnel, our staff, and our patients who are in long-term care centers in which we have seen a number of clusters, and hopefully we can get that under control. I must emphasize that the vaccine schedule is a marathon and not a sprint, and the vaccine rollout nationwide has been slower than anticipated, or at least hoped. Not sure what all the factors are, but we're hoping we can nationwide get it back on track and get the rate of vaccinations going where we'd like to see it be. However, I must tell you that our local vaccination program is dependent upon our vaccine supply and the allocations we receive from the state and what they receive from the vaccine manufacturers. We cannot vaccinate people with vaccines we don't have. So we are somewhat at the mercy, and we're not just getting a large bolus, it's coming in in aliquots from the state as they receive it from the manufacturers. Rest assured that everyone who would like to be vaccinated will be able to receive the vaccine as it becomes more widely available. However, I must emphasize, it's unlikely the vaccine will impact the case rate in the next few weeks or even in the next few months. It's going to take, like I said, it's a marathon. It's going to take a number of months to get enough people vaccinated, that that will be a major factor in controlling the spread of this virus. We will get there, it's just it's not going to be next week or the following week. So with all this information, I have signed a new order that will keep the current restrictions in place. It will be in place for four weeks, 28 days through midnight, February 6. We will then reevaluate where we are as a community and what data trends are, and perhaps we, if we see a continuation in the downward trend in both the hospital measures and the percent positive cases, hopefully we can relieve some of the restrictions we placed on the community. I must add, we are not sure what the recently identified mutated virus that seems to be more contagious will have on our local rate of disease. I don't know that it has been identified being in Kansas yet, but it has been identified in some of our neighboring states. Kansas yet, but it has been identified in some of our neighboring states. And I would be very skeptical that it's not here yet, since we know transportation across state lines is occurring quite frequently. The vaccine, the new virus strain appears to be more contagious. We're still learning about it. We should know more in the next few weeks to months. But I am also cautious because of this new strain that could be, in itself, its ability to infect more people could add to our rate here if it does become common in Kansas. But we'll see. Only time will tell on that. Again, in order for us to get to the place where we can even considering opening a community, we all, every one of us must continue to use the tools that we do have. In addition to vaccine, we have our toolbox, which you've all heard about before, wearing a mask or face covering, washing hands often, keeping our six-foot distance from others, particularly if we cannot have a mask at hand. Once you are able to get the vaccine, I urge everyone to take it. And we all need to work together to convince people that this is a safe vaccine and appears from the studies that were done. It was, it's very effective. So we need to get that word out. I am not aware of any serious side effects we've seen in our community since we started vaccinating. So these are the tools we have to continue to fight COVID. We're in this all together and we will get through it together. I am hopeful for this year. I hope this is the year we will see the virus becoming a non-issue, at least a much less issue. Be happy to take any questions if you have.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Minz, for that update. And summary, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Minz, for being here today. I just have a few quick questions. Do we know how many vaccines have been given in surrounding counties? So Butler, Harvey, Reno? Do we have that information?
I don't have that information on the tip of my tongue. I don't know if Adrian or anybody else in the audience has that information, but I don't.
And I've also been asked, for those who have received the vaccine, is it your recommendation to still wear masks?
Definitely. I don't think we can relax anything, even if you've had the vaccine. You know, we're not sure. We know what the vaccine does. It reduces the likelihood of illness. We don't know if it reduces the likelihood of you carrying the virus in your nasal secretions and therefore potentially giving it to other people. We know with other viruses and bacteria, some people are completely asymptomatic and it doesn't seem like their body is vulnerable to it invading their body, but they still can spread it to others. We don't have data. It's possible the vaccine eliminates the carriage of the virus in our nasal passageways, but we don't have that data yet. So it would be premature for people to quit wearing masks just because they've had the vaccine.
Okay, thank you. And two more questions. Will this vaccine, will the vaccine that you received cover the new strain that you discussed?
As far as we know, the vaccines that have been produced, including the Wingot, are still effective against this new strain. The protein that our body responds to is on this new virus and that protein doesn't appear to be changed any. So it should be very effective against the new virus as best we know. That's my speculation. And I don't have hard data proving that. At least everyone I've talked to, including authorities at the national level, do not think the vaccine will have a problem with this new virus.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is, over the past, you know, eight months, nine months or so, we've had a lot of orders come out. You just signed a new order today, really that's just reiterating the old order that's extending it, I think, four weeks. Can you just briefly tell us why so many orders? It's kind of hard for the community to understand the changing orders. And I just kind of want people to hear from you why, why we've had so many orders, why this order was put in place today. Would you mind addressing that for the community?
Well, again, the orders are to give the community guidance and even some definite restrictions. And we have restrictions we've placed on various retail outlets and on, and asking the retail outlets to help enforce the mask order in their premises. And we've also had the order to give restaurants and bars some guidance on what we think they should be doing to decrease the spread within their premises. So the order is out there to tell people what we are asking them to do, or in some cases telling them what to do, to keep this virus infection rate as low as possible. We know from experience, even in Sedgwick County, that you just lift the order entirely and just recommend it. I think we learned last May that there was an increase in cases after we did that. So I think it's important to keep the order out. I do think people pay attention to the order, at least a number of people do. And at least in my observations, since we've had this mask order for a number of months, the rate of mask wearing, at least in the places I go to, which are not many, is much higher than it had been before. So I think it's important to continue the order until we really have good control of this virus. My hope someday, as soon as we can get the rates down and hospitals decompressed and the positive testing rate very low, we could relax everything. But I must emphasize, until we hear otherwise, these tools I've talked about, wearing masks, washing hands, are going to continue. Whether there's an order or not, we've got to continue to make that.
Well, I thank you for your service in a state like Kansas where many of our health directors have resigned or left the profession because of threats, because of other issues. I appreciate your service. I know that this is not easy. And I just want to let you know that you're very much appreciated. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. I also want to say, I want to thank the members of our community that have been compliant with the order and are trying their best to do a piece of the solution to this infection. I really commend all those who are being observant and trying to follow the order as best as they can.
Right. Commissioner Glasscock.
So this, this is a new order, lasts four weeks. And you had mentioned benchmarks, specifically rates down, positivity rate low, hospital rates low as well. What, I think our communities deserves to know, what are these benchmarks? And obviously, that is, you know, a moving target. But at what point, you know, would you feel comfortable opening up more businesses, extending hours based on those benchmarks? What are those benchmarks? I know those may be somewhat fluid based on given circumstances. But what can our community, what goal can we look towards moving forward that they can begin to loosen restrictions?
If our number of tests being administered increases to where it was before the holidays and the percent positives remains low, like below 10%, I would feel comfortable that we're starting to see we've got good control. However, I want to emphasize, even if the order relaxes things, I got to convince people, don't quit wearing the mask just because the numbers are better.
I'll echo that to the general public as well. Don't quit wearing your mask. Continue to social distance. And that way, we can open our businesses and get our economy back up and running where it should be.
I mean, the analogy I use, you know, if you're a sports team, you're in the national football championship that's coming up, I guess, in a little over a week. If you're headed halftime, you just don't say, hey, guys, relax. We're winning. Same way with this virus. The virus is out there. It's still circulating. By far, 90% of us are still susceptible to it. And if we relax too much, the virus is going to take advantage of that.
I think people look towards goals. And I appreciate you adding some qualifiers to that as well. And I want to echo, you know, Commissioner Cruz's sentiments as well. Thank you for your service. I know it's a tough time. I know you've been incredibly busy as well. And I want to commend you for everything you've done for our community as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I also will mention that we'll be looking at the hospital numbers. Obviously, we got to have the hospitals in a situation they can take care of people with serious illnesses in their ICUs without those ICUs just being completely filled up with COVID patients. And they have room for taking care of all the other critical illnesses they have. So that's another major metric we're going to be watching.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, good morning, Dr. Minz, and welcome. Just a couple questions. You said about 7,000 doses have been given so far. Do you know how many have arrived in Sedgwick County?
I don't. I think Tim is going to talk a little bit more about the vaccine and he may have some more of those numbers.
Okay. Well, some of these questions, I've received a lot of phone calls and emails recently. And since the vaccine has arrived, everybody is interested in receiving it. So the next question I have is the priorities. Do you know when we're going to be able to move from 1A where we're doing the, all of the healthcare workers, that's who's been getting the 7,000 doses? When, I don't know what quantities we have in each of these different priorities. Do you have any idea how many?
I can't give you a date, but I believe we have enough to provide the healthcare providers that we've discussed. And once they're completed, we will move on to the next priority groups, which, again, Tim may want to comment on that. But I don't think that's too far in the future. I think we're going to see in second, third week of January that we're able to move on to the next priority groups.
Okay. I know the governor is setting the priorities. And I think that you're working with Dr. Norman to help develop those priorities. One of the questions that I've received is where do teachers fall in this? It seems like they ought to be very high in the priorities. So that one of our goals is get kids back in school. And without teachers, we can't do that.
You know, this is a difficult situation. I think one of the priority groups that's going to be coming up is what we call essential workers. That is, that gets very difficult because there are a lot of essential workers in our society. Teachers are certainly, certainly essential workers, but a lot of people are essential workers. And that's one of the limits. We're going to have to have very in-depth discussions, decide, well, within that group of essential workers, are there subgroups that we need to consider? So I don't disagree with you at all, but there's a lot of people that we want to keep working because their jobs are very important to keep society running. So it's going to be a very difficult decision, but we're going to be working on it.
Okay. As long as we're talking about priorities, long-term care facilities, I know that Walgreens has some kind of contract in order to be able to start doing the vaccinations there. But are they getting the supplies? And are we able to move into long-term care facilities?
Yes, you've alluded to the fact that the federal government decided to contract with Walgreens, CVS to do the long-term care facilities vaccinations. They did not give that responsibility to the county health departments. So that was kind of carved out in a separate way of doing it. So it's really not in our domain. I'm a little puzzled why it's taking so long. I have family members as well as patients in long-term care facilities and they haven't gotten the vaccine yet. And I'm actually concerned about that. So I have a big question too, is what's taking, what's the holdup with CVS and Walgreens of starting to get those people vaccinated? Because they're very high-risk patients. So I can't answer your question. It's not, it's not in the domain of the health department. But I've been watching the news and I have not gotten a good explanation of why they're not vaccinating yet.
Good. And as we talk about the pipeline, so far, it's going to a different, a number of different organizations. It's not all just coming to Sedgwick County Health Department for the distribution of the vaccine. As you work with Dr. Norman and the folks that are developing these priorities and figuring out where that, where that we're sending this pipeline, I guess the concern that the public has is they see that we're vaccinating over at Intrust Bank Arena, but we're not doing very many. We're going to do 1,000 a month, a week rather. But they don't see that as the final solution. So this pipeline needs to get into the doctors' offices. It needs to get into the pharmacies. It needs to get in people's arms is the bottom line. I don't know what's going on at the state of Kansas and how that we can get it to all these different people to start distributing the vaccine.
I agree with you. And I don't have a satisfactory answer for you. I will tell you that just this morning on one of the news services that I get every day with updates on the vaccine and the COVID infection, there is a report from Politico that the federal administration has decided it's going to accelerate the plan to begin offering coronavirus shots at pharmacies. This move comes after federal governments faced serious and fierce criticism for the slow pace of immunization. So over the next two weeks, they claim Operation Warp Speed estimates that 3,000 to 6,000 pharmacies could begin administering the COVID-19 shots, according to a senior HSS official. All I know is what that paragraph said, but if it's true, and I think it's true, hopefully the pharmacies will start having the vaccine and they can start giving it now. There's a lot of ifs and ands in that. Is that going to flow from the health, the state health department to the pharmacies? Or is it going to come directly to the pharmacies from the federal government? I don't know. Part of this is, number one, I want to emphasize, this is a huge logistical challenge for the country. Even under the best of circumstances, it's a huge logistical challenge. We got 330 million people in this country. Maybe at most, 20 million have already had the disease. And so maybe they don't need the vaccine. We don't know yet. But even with that, we're over 300 million people. They don't even have enough vaccine produced at this time to vaccinate all the people. We're trying to manufacture it as fast as we can. But just the human logistical machine that's needed to give this vaccine is among us. So I understand why the federal government and state governments are struggling with it. But you're right, we need, we can do better. We need to be getting it pumped out a lot faster than we are. So apparently, if this report's true, apparently the federal government realizes they got to do better. So we'll see. If this is true, I guess the pharmacies could be offering it to people. I'm not sure how they're going to handle the priority list if the pharmacies get it. We'll see.
Very good. Well, my final is just a comment. If I, if I go back in time before I was commissioner, but we had, I don't know if it's H1N1 or M1H1, but anyway, swine flu. The health department, I know, was very, very active in that distribution. And I'm kind of was on the outside looking in. But I thought it was very efficient, the way that the health department ran that. The plan was put together. We still got a copy of that plan. I recall getting some kind of notice on what time my wife and I could drive over to, to the Harry Street Mall. And we walked in, got a vaccination, and we walked back out. It went very smoothly. The thing that I don't want to see is what's happening down in Florida where we've got seniors sitting in lawn chairs lined up all night long trying to get in and get a vaccine. So I just want to let the public know that really, that I've received some criticism that we're not going fast enough. And they're blaming the health department. And I want to make sure that the public understands that that is not the long pole in the tent. We have the facilities. We've got a plan. We're ready to move forward. The problem is we don't have a vaccine. So we can't put it in somebody's arm if we don't have it. So I just want to make sure the public is aware that health department and Dr. Minz and everyone that's involved in this are working very diligently to make sure that we can vaccinate people if we had the vaccine. We just don't have the vaccine. So that's all my comments. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Minz, for, I'm going to start off by saying thank you, Dr. Minz, for presenting this to us a little bit early. So we have time to discuss it during a regular B O C C meeting. I think that's really important to this community. I'll say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, but some of this is follow-up from my colleagues. And I have some questions from people who've emailed me, contacted me. So let me go through those just a little bit. But I am curious, in terms of our hospital staff or medical professionals, do we know what percentage of them have received the vaccination at this point?
I don't have an exact number for you. And the hospitals were given the vaccine to administer to their hospital personnel. So they would be the ones with the numbers. But I, I'm pretty sure they were pretty high. I think there were very few who opted out getting the vaccine. I know there's huge demand. And even some of the physicians were a little frustrated that they couldn't get it quite as fast as they could. So we've been, I think we've been very encouraged by the rate of uptake of the vaccine amongst the hospital personnel. So, but I don't have a number for you. But I would guess off the top of my head, it's 80, 90%.
Well, I guess I would ask for the, for the percentage that did not receive the vaccination. It wasn't due to lack of availability. It was perhaps a personal choice. Everyone in the, in those, everyone in those vocations has been offered the opportunity, I would assume, at this point. Is that fair to say that?
I think so. In my discussions with the hospitals, there still have a few people that were out of town or on vacation or had some illness and they didn't want to take it while they were ill with something else. So there were a few exceptions. And they're, they have plans to get those people back in line. But I think they're pretty close to most of the people who wanted getting it.
Very good. All right. That's, that's a great answer. Back to the long-term care facilities. Do we, do we have a status? I mean, I understand that this is kind of out of the county's hands. We're not doing it from the county's perspective. But I am, it is such a huge part of our data. Do we have a status on, on what is going on in the LTC facilities? Are they getting the vaccination to? I mean, is it rolling out? We're just, or is it just kind of held up? Or do we know what's going on? I know you already mentioned some of this, but I guess I'm, I'm interested in, I'm saying, I know everyone hasn't got, hasn't received the vaccine. I know everyone hasn't got, hasn't received the vaccination, obviously, you already said that. But what is the status?
Well, I know from personal experience with patients and family that I have that are in long-term care facilities, the patients have been asked if they want it, and they've gotten their permission, but they haven't started administering yet. I assume that's because they haven't gotten the vaccine delivered to them.
Okay.
But that's speculation, Mr. Howell. I don't have any factual information, but I can imagine if they had it, why they just don't give it.
I don't know who has the answer to that question, but I think that's something we ought to be, we ought to be trying to get that dated, because it's very important to our, to our county.
Agreed.
Kind of following up on what Commissioner Glass just asked a moment ago, I'm thinking about what's coming up in the future. So this, this order's for four weeks, and I think it expires, I think we said February the 6th, is that the date? I believe that's the right date. Anticipating, if our data does improve, are we anticipating changes on our gathering limits, potentially, or our curfews? What would be the next thing we would probably tweak in this order? I assume the face covering is not going to change. I get this question all the time. When are you guys going to stop with the face man, the face mask mandate? I don't think that's going to be the next thing we'll see. I think it's going to, I would anticipate it would be gathering limits and curfews, potentially. Can you talk about that?
I would say the number of people who can attend masked gatherings could be increased. Possibly the number of people in facilities like healthcare center, not health, fitness centers and restaurants and stuff could be lifted a little higher than it is now. And again, I have to emphasize, I wish we could just eliminate the order entirely, but the virus is still in the community. Vast majority of us are still susceptible to it.
Right.
We're going to have to keep the pressure on to some degree for a number of weeks to months, until we get the vaccination rate up high enough that we really do feel like we can start getting back to total normality.
Thank you for that answer. And I would say, anecdotally, I do see masks virtually, when I go out and do any type of retail business, I see mask-wearing is, is almost 100%. And I'm very happy that that's what I see. There may be a couple people that aren't doing it, but I think, I agree with you, that the community has been, has been very responsive, and I think they've also updated their behaviors on where they go and when they go out, and in the size of the gatherings. I think it's been a great community response, and I think that we're seeing that in our data. And so, going back to what happened before Thanksgiving, I know there was a great concern about a potential spike in our data, which, again, I think you've already mentioned this, but our, our actual data turned out to be pretty encouraging. It was actually better than we expected, and I think things are going in the right direction, and they're continuing to go the right direction based on all of the data we have at our fingertips. And I appreciate you, you know, I know there was some discussion early on about extending this next order to six weeks, and you reduced it to four weeks, and I think that was great. That will allow us to see what happens during the Christmas and New Year's Day impact on our data, and see if there's a spike or not. So I want to say thank you for that. I want the public to know that you did change it from, I think, a six-week plan down to a four-week plan, just for us to get an idea on what's happening with the holiday impact on our data. So that was, that was a change, I appreciate that. Two specific questions I received that I would like to ask you, I don't know how to answer this, but you know, if, if people are socially distancing and they're wearing masks, which is a kind of a double protection, because if they're socially distant, masks may not serve much of a purpose, but if they're doing both, so actually double protection, socially distancing and wearing masks, why would we limit the gatherings to 25 people?
We, I think the mask-wearing and the social distancing are having a major impact on the spread of this disease, but neither one is 100% effective. The masks are good, they catch most of the secretions, but they don't catch 100% of the secretions when you talk, or sing, or yell. The more people we get together in large groups, if there is a case there that's a super-spreader, the more likely a whole lot more people are going to get infected. So in some sense, keeping groups smaller, if we do have a super-spreader, at least fewer people are getting exposed.
Okay. The second question I received was regarding the restaurants that close at 11 o'clock under, under this one provision. I'm thinking about places like IHOP, or even, I know there's still one Denny's in operation, I believe, in town. For our third-shift workers that would like to have a place to go, would a restaurant like that be something that you'd be willing to exempt from the requirement to close at 11 o'clock PM?
I think that's worth discussion. I think it's worth consideration.
So let me, let me just advocate for your next order, or if, if you make changes before then, please consider allowing restaurants such as an IHOP, that provides services to our third-shift workers. Allow restaurants such as that, that do not serve alcohol, allow them to stay open, because that's their, that's their normal business. And I think it makes sense, if we're going to allow businesses like a restaurant to be open at 7:00 PM, to serve the general public that are up at that time of day, why not allow an IHOP, for example, to serve that, serve that third shift, that third shift or overnight work, or safety, or law enforcement officers, for example, might like a place to go? So I think that would be a reasonable change. The other thing I would advocate for, again, the caveat is social distancing and wearing masks, but I would like to see us, I guess, consider a 50% or some other percentage of occupancy as a guideline for all places. I think it makes more sense. Again, if you had, my extreme example is if you had a million-square-foot building, according to this, it's still limited to 25 people. I think that would be understandable, that would, that doesn't necessarily make sense. But if you base the number of people based on occupancy, I think it works in every case. So I would rather see us move in that direction. I think it's a better, better policy. So I would, I would just encourage you, Dr. Minz, since you and I don't get a chance to talk very much, I would ask you to please to consider that in your next, next round of health orders. And then finally, this might be a question, maybe more for staff, I don't know, but I will ask staff or Dr. Minz if they'd like to comment on what is our status in this community for enforcement on these businesses? I know there's a separate document that discusses a process by which we would enforce this health order, and I would ask, I guess, has that been happening? What is our status? And can you please give us an update? I'm not sure who that question should go to.
I'll defer to the staff on that issue. I don't have any information on that.
All right. That's all my questions for you, Dr. Minz. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kirk Sponsel, Assistant County Counselor. I'm obviously in the Counselor's Office. I'm part of the review process in terms of enforcement, in terms of potential violations. And so, right now, we have received approximately, I believe it was around 530 complaints concerning businesses. In review of those complaints, about 430 of them might be potential violations. And when I say that, that means something that's within our jurisdiction, and that has an allegation concerning a violation, whether they include any information or not. I just consider all those potential. Of those 430 approximate legitimate violations, 167 of them, I believe, at last count, were for single businesses. So for example, if a business has only received one complaint against them during the entire course of this affair, then that's concerning the numbers. In terms of sending out violation notice letters, we've sent out, I believe, 22. For follow-up, where we refer the concerns of certain businesses to local enforcement, I believe we've sent out five or six of those now, requests now for follow-up to local law enforcement, and we've issued six citations for potential violations.
Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you. And before Dr. Minz, I actually did think of one other question, sir. I'm sorry to go back to Dr. Minz, but you've answered my question. Thank you for that, and so I needed with that, with that one. But Dr. Minz, I have one other question, and that is, with the large venues, you have a, there's a, there's a caveat in here for venues that can, that can exceed 2,000 people. One of my questions would be, if a facility is somewhere less than 2,000, and they need more than 100, what's, is there going to, is there some, some process by which they can make an appeal to have an exemption? In other words, I know for large venues over 2,000, that's, that's already built into the order. But let's say it's a facility that would manage 1,000 people, or 500 people, could they, could they also not provide some type of a, go through some type of an appeal process?
Maybe I'll let Justin comment on that, about the appeal process. Justin, do you mind?
Sure, Dr. Minz. Commissioner Howell, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. This time in Dr. Minz's order, there's not a, an ability for that, for a facility unless it's 2,000 or more, an outdoor indoor entertainment venue to submit a request for that. That, you know, would certainly be up to the will of either, whether it be the Commission or Dr. Minz on amending the order to allow something like that to be put into place. But right now, that's not an option under the order.
Thank you for that answer, and I, and I think that's probably, I agree, that's what it says. I just wanted to say, again, in terms of fairness to all entities out there, I would like to see an appeals process available to something that's less than 2,000. I think that would be something that, if you're an event planner, and you, and you're trying to do something that needs 500 people, what's the process? I think we need to address that. So I think there should be a way for that to happen, and I'd like to see that. I know it might be laborsome for us to review lots of these appeals, but I think the public deserves an opportunity. So that's all I'd say there. Thank you. Thank you for the answer.
Okay. Dr. Minz, a lot of questions. Thank you for addressing them all.
You're welcome.
So I will leave you be to the rest of your day, and thanks again for all you do. So appreciate it.
Thank you for your support, and thank you for all of us, what we're doing to help control this disease.
You bet. Okay. Next up. Kate, this is about the storyboard, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm going to note that it's starting at about 10:05, because we all get a lot of questions, and I'm going to reference, at 10:05 this morning, you might hear a great presentation on what we're doing.
Absolutely, absolutely. So this morning, I'd like to let everyone know that we have a, a new platform, a new dashboard for folks who are interested in vaccine information. We have it here on the county's homepage, Exploring COVID-19 Vaccine Data. This dashboard will be updated weekly on Wednesdays, with the previous week's information as reported to the health department by, on a voluntary basis by our providers, and also what the health department is doing in terms of vaccinations. So this is the weekly trend. Like I said, it's updated on Wednesdays of the previous completed week. So we all know, like Dr. Minz was discussing, in this initial rollout, we have very limited supply of vaccine doses, so they are delegated to the critical folks responding to the pandemic. On the dashboard, or on the story map here, we have a table that shows the expected vaccine availability by population group. We have this table shared in variety of places on the website, but it is also here on our story map. So you can see in the winter months where we are currently, healthcare personnel, including hospitals, and frontline public health workers are receiving the vaccination. And then we also know that long-term care facility staff and residents are also scheduled to receive it. Yes.
Can I ask a question? So this also is from the state, from KDHE?
Yes, yes. This is KDHE's plan that we've, we've modified and branded for the county.
And I know it's probably impossible to do, but it sure would be nice to have an approximate date in those four columns, but that would, I don't want to have to obligate, because we don't know, again, how many vaccines we get. That is one of the questions I get, and that might be.
We continue to.
Maybe an estimated or something. But we can work with KDHE if you can, Tim, and if you can work with KDHE, and then see if there's a estimated timeframe.
Absolutely. And as KDHE updates their table, we'll be able to modify that. So if they're able to provide any sort of, you know, month at least, we know late winter could be March, February, you know, it's, it's very ambiguous. But whatever KDHE is able to share, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you walk me through how to get to that, again?
Certainly. The county's homepage.
Okay.
And then the, the second bubble here is all about vaccine information, so it's Exploring COVID Vaccine Data.
Okay. Is there a way to change that to the story map? I mean, that's what it's called, right?
We can. We have the, the COVID data story map as well, and it's called Exploring COVID Data.
Okay.
But we can change it to story map and make them both match. I'm pretty sure that's a quick fix. So scrolling down, we also have links to the frequently asked questions and other information that we are currently updating. And then about the story map, these vaccine doses are voluntarily reported to us, to the health department, by our local providers. The state is in charge of this dispensing, or excuse me, the distribution process, and so anything that we have beyond Sedgwick County Health Department information is all reported on a voluntary basis. So what we have right now is just a brief snapshot of the COVID-19 vaccine doses given within Sedgwick County by week and cumulative total. So right now, as of last week, we were able to report that there were over 5,000 doses provided to healthcare workers for their first dose. I know that Tim has the most up-to-date information, so his information will have a bit brighter numbers than what with his has. And so what we know is that we are seeing a slow build, as we anticipate, in our community, and as more vaccine comes to us, we'll be able to vaccinate more people. Scrolling down, this figure shows the cumulative total provided in a line graph with the same information, where it shows, as of last week, we had just over 5100 doses of the vaccine given.
And for the public, this is not the healthcare, hospitals did a lot of vaccinating on themselves.
Correct.
This is just Sedgwick County vaccination?
Sedgwick County, and I believe we've got two providers who've given their information to us.
Okay.
So as, as more providers give us their information, we'll be able to update this with more accurate, a more accurate reflection of what's going on in the community.
Okay.
But this is the information as, as good as we can, can get it at this point. Figure two shows the cumulative first dose and second dose of the vaccine. As you can see, we have not yet provided any second dose of the vaccine. We know that the manufacturers are withholding that second dose until such time as it's appropriate to send that, so everyone who's received their first dose will be able to come back and get the second dose. And then here we have a bar chart that shows the breakdown between Sedgwick County and non-Sedgwick County vaccine distribution or vaccine dispensing. So we know that on December 22nd, that was when we first, the health department first began dispensing and providing the COVID vaccine to the health department staff and EMS crews. So that week alone, we were able to vaccinate 600 folks. And then the week following that, we were able to vaccinate 500 folks. We are continuing, obviously, to vaccinate a number of people at Interest Bank Arena, so we certainly expect to see this number increase as the weeks continue. And that is the bulk of our vaccine information as we have it. We also have links to the county's dashboard, and then the other COVID-19, just data story map. So that's another resource that's very important for people to follow as we are getting the vaccine, as more and more people are becoming vaccinated. It shows a quick snapshot of what it looks like in our community, and knowing that we don't have all the information, but we have, we have what's being provided to us by our partners. And that's, that is the vaccine story map, so if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or we can certainly find the answers.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate what you've got up there so far. One of the criticisms that I've received in phone calls and emails is, they think that we've got doses sitting on the shelves that we're not giving. So is there any way that we can list how many doses that we've got as they arrive, and how many are, are sitting there in our inventory?
I'll have to check, but I'm sure that that's something that we could add. It might be just specific to Sedgwick County and not the entire county on all the providers, but we can certainly look into that.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Kate, for this update. I think this is, that, that last one you just had up there was going to be a very valuable.
Yes.
That chart, that graph, and so.
Yep, and we have this updated every Wednesday, so with the, with the previous week, so I'm really encouraged to see those numbers increase and the trends continue to increase. Changing topics a little bit here, I do want to remind everyone that tonight at 5:30, we have the COVID-19 Vaccine Town Hall. It'll be live-streamed on the county's Facebook page and YouTube channel. We have Dr. Minz coming to discuss the vaccine, Dr. Duggins, Dr. Pereira, our very own Dr. Pereira from EMS, and then Dr. Hagan as well. So these four physicians will be able to answer. So these four physicians will be able to answer our community's questions about the vaccine and provide their expert opinion on that. And we've been gathering questions for them by people submitting them to Sedgwick County, to our email address, communications@sedgwick.gov. So 5:30 to 6:30, it'll be livestreamed, definitely tune in. And if you have any questions, certainly send them to communications@sedgwick.gov, or feel free to type into the chat of the videos during the meetings, and then we can also filter those questions in live time, or in real time, not live time. So that is a very encouraging and very happy event that we've got going on for us tonight.
I don't see anything else, Kate. Thanks again for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Hey, Kate, while you're up there, who are the two partners that you mentioned? You said we have data from two partners, but you never mentioned who the partners were.
I don't have that information, but let me, must.
You got it? Okay.
We'll get that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Crofton, Deputy County Manager. I'm trying to write down all of the questions that I've heard. I've got some points that I'll make, and then I'll try and get all those questions answered. But if I don't write them down, I'll forget them. So I'd like to talk about the vaccination process, some of the operational things. Dr. Minz certainly is an expert in the science, in the medical science, and we've got a bunch of staff that are really involved in the operations of the process. So the Health Department is able to schedule between 1,200 and 1,800 vaccinations per day at Interest Bank Arena, and has a plan to use every dose that we've received. We're following CDC and KDHE guidance in the scheduling of who should receive the vaccine first, and at this time, we remain in the initial phase, some call it Phase 1A, with an emphasis on healthcare-associated workers, and we are scheduling them now. And I'd like to encourage anybody in the community that does work in the healthcare industry, that hasn't received vaccine yet, to go to the Sedgwick County website and look at that scheduling process. It's pretty clearly laid out. But we've got appointments available later this week and into next week, and so we'd like to make sure that everyone knows that if they work in the healthcare industry, they have an opportunity to get their vaccine now. The Health Department is going to be moving their vaccine clinic on Friday and Saturday of this week to their East 9th location because of a scheduling conflict with Interest Bank Arena. But we've got plans in place to be able to vaccinate folks at East 9th or at the Interest. Interest gives us a lot of space, and it allows us to do a high volume. Yesterday, we did 1,280 vaccinations, and so that space gives us the opportunity to do a lot of volume. And so we like being there, but we continue to look for permanent space where we're not going to have that conflict. I'd like to remind everyone that the Health Department is just one dispensing point in a very complex system. Others that have received vaccine and are dispensing it to targeted populations include the hospitals, as we've talked about, the VA, Hunter Health through the tribal system, and then the FQHCs have also received vaccine, and they're partnering with the Health Department on some of the mass vaccination events that we're doing right now. As more vaccine is received, more people will be vaccinated, again, following those CDC and KDHE guidelines. Vaccine distribution across the state is managed by KDHE, and they're making decisions about how to allocate that vaccine as it's received by the state to hospitals, health departments, and FQHCs. Again, the VA gets theirs separately, and the vaccine that comes in for long-term care facilities to Walgreens and CVS goes to them directly and doesn't go through KDHE. The Governor has been doing weekly updates on Wednesdays, and we anticipate further information this afternoon, and we're looking forward to that. Some of the information, the questions that you've asked, and I know questions that you received from the community are for data that is really statewide data or data that's kept at KDHE. KDHE has indicated a plan to put together some kind of a dashboard as well. Haven't seen it yet. We're looking forward to that, and we'll use information that they've got as we share information on our dashboard as well. Again, the vaccine schedule is designed to ensure that all who want to be vaccinated will have that opportunity. The implementation of the vaccine schedule is dependent on a couple of different things. Biggest one is manufacturing and distribution schedule from those vaccine providers. I would like to point out that within the last week, we've received our ultra-cold freezers, so if the state decides that they need to allocate Pfizer vaccine to us, we're able to hold that and then use that, so we're ready for that in case they send that to us as well. And the other thing that I'd like to do is thank the Health Department staff because they have showed a tremendous amount of diligence and flexibility over the last nine months, to be honest, but certainly as we've started our vaccine program as well, they've been very flexible and adaptable. We've moved the vaccine clinic back and forth from InTrust to Health Department sites, and we'll continue to do so to make sure that we're able to continue to vaccinate folks. And while I'm up here, I'd also like to point out that we continue to test. We collect samples at the Extension Center Monday through Friday, and that's without an appointment, and we tested 1,400 people in three days last week. Dr. Minz talked about how it appeared that testing interest had kind of dropped off a little bit around the holidays. I think people are now back and interested and ready to get tested. Tested over 600 people on Monday, and so that is a very important part of our response to this pandemic, and we'll continue to deliver that service over time. So I'm going to run through the questions that I've heard, and then if that prompts more questions, and more questions come up, I'll try and address those as well. So one of the questions was how many doses of vaccine have been received in the community? And again, I can't respond completely because we don't know what has come into the community from nursing homes yet, and I'm using rough numbers based on some of the things that we've heard from the hospitals, but I believe that the community has received probably 16,000 doses possibly. And between the Health Department and the hospitals has probably delivered 10,000 to 11,000 doses. The Health Department, as of yesterday, at the end of the day, had delivered 4,010 doses. They did 1,280 doses yesterday. We've got over 1,000 folks scheduled today, not in a week, 1,000 a day, not 1,000 a week. So as long as we've got folks scheduled, we're going to be able to run folks at that number through. The non-hospital doses that have been received, approximately 13,000. So between the FQHCs and the Health Department, we've received about 13,000 of that. We've given probably close to 5,000, and we've got scheduled, we've got another, at least three, maybe 4,000 appointments scheduled over the next four or five days. So again, we, our intent is to deliver every dose that comes into the community that we have access to. The FQHCs have, as I mentioned, partnered with us, and so they've transferred some of their vaccine to the Health Department so that we can deliver that out of the Interest Bank Arena high-volume site. FQHCs have their regular healthcare to deliver on a normal basis, and since we've set up the vaccine clinic at Interest Bank Arena, it's easier for them to refer, if they've got healthcare workers, to, and again, right now, since we're primarily serving that 1A population, that's healthcare workers, it's easier for them to transfer the vaccine to us and let us run that clinic, and then they've also helped out with staff as well. So some of the folks that are working in the clinic at InTrust and that will be working in the Health Department on the weekend are folks that work at those FQHCs as well. And we've got a number of volunteers through the Medical Reserve Corps, and the community has responded very well to help the Health Department deliver that vaccine. The next question was, when will we move from this 1A population? And Dr. Minz mentioned it, and I can't give you a firm answer. We know from Bureau of Labor Statistics that there are about 13,000 or 14,000 licensed folks that fit the Bureau of Labor definition of healthcare workers. So that would be physicians, osteopaths, nurses, RTs, things like that, folks that have a license. There are a number of other folks that meet the healthcare associate worker, associated worker in our community. So that 13,000 number may be 20, it may be 30. I can't tell you exactly how many folks meet that criteria. So we will continue to focus on folks that are in that 1A category and try and get everybody that needs vaccination, that wants vaccination, through the course of the next couple of weeks. We'll, and when KDHE says that we're ready as a state to move on to the next phase, we'll be ready to move as well. There was a question about where teachers are, and Kate showed that chart before. It wasn't very clearly defined. It talked about essential workers, and then there was another category, and it indicated teachers in there. But one of the things that's going on right now is there's a group that meets and discusses this very topic at the state level, and they're the ones that are refining those decisions about when to open up from 1A to 1B to 1C, 2, that sort of thing. That group is meeting regularly. They meet, they met yesterday. That's why I think we may get some additional information from the Governor later today because there was another meeting there. We have some local representation. Annette Graham, our Director of Aging, is part of the COVAC, and so she's there primarily to talk about our seniors and number of different industries and expertise is part of that COVAC group that's helping make those decisions. But I think that as we get closer to the time to move from out of 1A, we'll see much more discreet information about B and C. There's a question about long-term care facilities. Right now, we don't have information about how they're doing. I know that there are some long-term care facilities that have started receiving vaccinations from Walgreens and CVS. Annette is making a request to KDHE employee, or Keadad's employee right now, to see if we can get some more information, get an update about what's going on with the long-term care facility vaccination program. And as soon as that's available, we'll share that with you as well. Talked about the numbers of vaccinations given, and again, we've got more than 1,000 appointments scheduled today, tomorrow, and we continue to schedule even throughout the course of the day. So if someone is a healthcare worker and their schedule changes, and they may have an opportunity at 4 o'clock to go get a vaccination, I'd encourage them to go to the county website and take a look. We may be able to serve them even today. So that's a live scheduling process. Again, I talked about KDHE and their commitment to provide additional data. Hopefully, we'll, we may even see something this afternoon, but if not, we'll continue to ask them to provide us information so that we can share it out. And then there was a question about who are the partners that are reflected in our story map, and I can't tell you which hospital it was, but I know it was one of the two hospitals. So we only have hospital data from one of the hospitals. I don't know which one. We're working to get the information from the other hospital as well. But we do know that they have, between the two hospitals, they've vaccinated about 6,000 of their employees so far. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that may have come up.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. You addressed a lot. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for answering those great questions. I had one question from someone regarding, do we continue, we plan to continue to continue, plan to continue using InTrust Bank Arena as a vaccination site for this community? Something that's going to continue for a while?
It is, at least through the month of January. As I mentioned, we continue to look for other, a location where we wouldn't be competing with hockey games and that sort of thing for that time. But again, we'd be looking for a site that would be similar in size, that would allow us to run that, have that number of vaccinators distanced and get that number of people through in a day.
So one of the, so one of the questions I received was, are we running at capacity? In other words, I don't know how many lines we have of people going through that process, and again, 1,000 sounds like a big number, but when you consider the size of this community, considering everyone needs two doses, at that rate, if you vaccinated 90% of this community, it would take, it would take three years at that rate to do that. So clearly, that's not the plan. I mean, I'd actually know, what is the plan?
Well, we're not the only vaccinator, so I'd like to remind the community of that yet again. We are not the only vaccinator. In this phase, we are one of the few vaccinators, but the plan, and again, the document, I don't want to change screens for the lizard. This document shows a number of different phases, and by the time that we move to the limited availability in late winter, and then particularly as we move into increased availability, spring, and general availability in summer, the Health Department probably won't even be the primary vaccinator at that point. There will be a number of different family physicians, clinics, that sort of thing, that will also have signed up to do vaccinations. Right now, when you talk about non-COVID vaccines, even with the flu, the Health Department is the prime, is not the primary vaccinator in the community. It's the other healthcare providers in the community.
And I think it's a fair answer because, again, I've received this question numerous times. I want to just make sure everyone understands, we're doing this, we're doing this right now primarily because of the phase, I think the phase plan really requires, if you will, special handling right now, but that's not going to be, that's not the plan going forward necessarily. It's going to evolve and expand, obviously, so the entire community can access the vaccination as soon as that's available. I think that's really the bigger factor. I think Dr. Minz already mentioned, availability really is the number one problem here. It's not, it's not logistics on giving the doses, it's the availability of the vaccine, vaccine itself. So again, back to my question, so right now for InTrust Bank Arena, are we running at capacity? Are there appointments that are not being used each day, or are we basically filled up, and that's really the rate that we can run at right now?
We could, we have not vaccinated, we have not filled every appointment that we have available yet. So we could, we have appointment times, and we could process, as I said before, 1,800 people in a given day at that location. And so if we had folks that were available to be vaccinated, and again, one of the issues is the time for individuals that want to get vaccinated. They may worry about the duration of stepping away from their work for a time like. One of the things I'm going to do is kind of walk through the vaccination process at InTrust for the community, and I don't know that any of you have had any opportunity to see it either, so I'll walk through that in a second. But it's a relatively short process, and for most people, it's a painless process as well. And so if healthcare workers are available, they can carve out 30 minutes to an hour of their day, we can probably get them through. So we've got appointments available.
I guess my final comment, and I appreciate the answers, you're doing great, but my final, I guess the comment would be, if we did suddenly find a large amount of vaccine available, say the state shipped us a huge amount of vaccine, do we have plans on how we would implement, you know, getting that out to the people? So we have to be thinking ahead, what's our next step? Should that become available? What would we do? And I'm sure that you have a plan. You don't have to tell me what that is, I just want to have some confidence that that's been thought through, and we're ready for that, if that was to happen. That's all I need.
It absolutely has been considered, and we're ready in the event that we get more vaccines.
That's a great answer. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, Tim, I don't see other questions. You feel to walk us through the process real quick?
Here is a map of the Interest Bank Arena site, and we are using the site, we're using the north side of the site, and so the parking lots are identified. We're using entrance C for folks to come in, and we'd like them to enter. And before they enter, there are a couple of steps that they need to do, and that first step is to register online with us. And so if they go to the Sedgwick County website, Kate showed it earlier, there's a place to click to get you into the registration process. We ask a few questions, you provide some information, and that will streamline the process for you if you do that in advance. There's a form that you can fill out and then print out and bring with you, and we'll get you through the line very quickly at that point. get you through the line very quickly at that point. Once you've gone through the check-in process, so you've had the opportunity to do your registration, you print that form out, you bring that paper in, somebody's going to review the paperwork with you, and then they're going to send you upstairs. And we've got an escalator and a set of stairs to get you upstairs, and that'll get you to the concourse. And so the advantage to InTrust Bank Arena, as I mentioned, was a lot of space in those concourses. It allows us to spread our vaccinators out. It allows us to spread individuals out. And then as we get to the end, you'll see the waiting area because we want to have people wait at least fifteen minutes so that we can observe them in case there's any adverse reactions. And so what we anticipate, what we tell folks to anticipate about a thirty-minute time right now, most folks are getting through the vaccination process, the registration, or the, the check-in and the vaccination process in about five minutes, and then they spend fifteen minutes in the observation area, and they're out. So we've got vaccination stations. We've got, we're set up right now for twenty vaccinators, and we have been able to fill those twenty slots in almost all hours. So that gives us the opportunity to run those, to schedule those eighteen hundred appointments, for example. And so we've got twenty vaccinators, there's a staff person that is with them to assist with some paperwork and that sort of thing. But we've got vaccination stations that run along the concourse. And then after you receive your vaccine, we ask you to spend some time with us in the observation area. We've got medical personnel that are watching folks that are in there. And in case anyone does have any reaction to that vaccination, we are prepared to help them with that. And after about fifteen minutes, we let people go, and they leave from an area right next to the vaccination area, and then they're back out into the parking lot and on their way. So again, it's a relatively short process, and we're able to get folks in and out very quickly, so. But wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to see how that worked, what, what folks were experiencing as they've come in.
Okay, that's very helpful. Again, Tim, any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I want to come walk through this. Can I come walk through it?
Sure.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I want to see it and do maybe a video and really help the community see how it's working and how easy it is, the process that you guys have lined out. Yeah, so I want to do that soon. But just to reiterate, I think we've, we've heard a couple of comments saying that, you know, we have vaccines that are sitting. We don't want them to sit. So I just want to reiterate the fact that we don't have vaccines just sitting. We're filling those appointments, flexible schedule, I believe that you are here, you're talking about, Saturday, Sundays, appointments, those kinds of things. So please just reiterate that one more time for everybody, that we don't have vaccines just sitting. We're doing as many as we can with the population that we're trying to vaccinate right now. Can you just, one more time?
We are vaccine, we don't have vaccine, we do have vaccine that we store. So the vaccine that we received that came into the community for the FQHCs and the Health Department all came in one week, about a week and a half ago. And so at that point in time, we ramped up, started scheduling folks and started. And we, if, and we did not receive any vaccine last week. It does not look like we'll receive any vaccine this week because, from what I understand, vaccine that came into the state this week has been shared with hospitals across the state because there, there were hospitals that did not receive any of that initial shipment. And so this, KDHE is responsible for distributing vaccines across the state. So we didn't receive any vaccine this week. We may not receive any vaccine next week. If we don't, we will have used up all of the vaccine that's been allocated to us. We believe, we hope that we'll get some vaccine next week. But no, we're not holding vaccines back. As people schedule, we're giving them a vaccine. So if they meet that healthcare criteria, and I think one of the things that may frustrate folks is that they're not eligible to schedule right now because they don't meet that healthcare associated worker definition. And I understand that. And again, we're working with KDHE and the guidelines that they provide us because they're very thoughtful about who they, the, the process through which vaccine and the populations that are vaccinated. And so we're going to follow those KDHE guidelines, but we're giving the vaccine as people say, I'm ready for vaccine.
And Governor Kelly and KDHE give updates on Wednesdays. What time does that happen this afternoon? Or what time does it happen on Wednesdays?
It usually happens in the afternoon. I don't know that if this afternoon's will be at three o'clock or four o'clock, but usually it's late afternoon.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. That sounds like a huge operation that you guys have going. I'm excited to see it.
We'd be glad to walk you through.
Tim, just one quick clarification. I know that this 1A group, it also does include people that work at eye doctors and dentists and hygienists. And so it's, it's more than just traditional doctor and hospital people.
Correct. It's that broader healthcare definition.
So it, a lot of medical services that involve care, eyes.
Exactly.
Dental, all that stuff. So I only knew that because I had a couple of them, even part-time workers at a, at a shop that was one eye and one dental, said, yeah, I'm going to get, I'm getting my vaccine. So I'm glad, that sounds to me like we're getting out there. Anybody that can get it, if you've got a certification of a KDHE health worker, you're, you're eligible.
Yeah, and I guess I'd like to point out that the Health Department has a group of staff that have been making calls to all of the clinics that we're aware of to say, you know, we've got vaccine, here's how you get scheduled, so that, so we're doing outreach to the community to get them.
Very good.
Through the process.
Okay. Tim, I don't see any other questions. If there's not any, then thank you for the presentation, and it's a lot of information. So thanks for, and Mr. Manager, thanks for coordinating this kind of at a last minute with everybody to, to get this up. But we've got a lot of moving pieces in this, in this deal, and I know the commission is appreciative of the information because we, we're on the front line of getting inquiries, so to speak. I'll make a motion that, receive and file. I want to make also a motion, or not a motion, but Dr. Minz, thank you. I know you've been joining us this whole presentation, so you, you didn't need to be here, but thanks for listening in and being available. So I'll make a motion to receive and file as we, in a second. There's been a second. Okay. Any other questions? Being none. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Cedric County Zoo Update.
We are, there we go.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Welcome, Dr. Jeff, to the meeting this morning.
Doing well. I'm going to share my screen here with you.
How are the animals surviving the cold front coming through?
They're doing okay. They're doing okay. Can everyone see the screen okay?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay.
And we also have a handout.
Thank you for providing me a few minutes this morning to give you an update on what's, what's going on here at the zoo. I'll, I'll just start with kind of a, a brief overview of how COVID has impacted the zoo. Just like everyone else, it's definitely had an impact on us. As I've told my staff, probably the hardest decision I've made in my thirty-three-year zoo career was making the decision to close the zoo on the thirteenth of March. We were one of the first zoos in the country to do that, but it was shortly thereafter that everybody followed suit. It was definitely the right thing to do, but I think it left a lot of questions in terms of, you know, how long were we going to be closed? What was the financial impact? Was, you know, what was the financial impact going to be when we finally reopened? And that happened on eighteenth of May, so we were roughly closed two months. And based on that, you know, two-month closure, we estimated a deficit for the year of one point five million dollars, which, as you can imagine, is, is a good chunk of our budget, about twenty-seven percent of our budget. So that was quite, quite striking to all of us. But, you know, with the, with the help of the zoo board and the strategic operations team and the entire zoo staff, we really sharpened our pencils and tightened the budget and reduced expenses. And I'm, I'm really happy to say that as of the end of December, it looks like we've been able to reduce that deficit to about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We're still working through some calculations, but, you know, it's about a third of what we kind of anticipated we might be ending the year at. So it's, it's much better. It's not where we would love to be, but it's, it's much better than the alternative. Throughout this whole pandemic, our, our highest priority has really been the safety and well-being of our staff, our animals and our guests. And we've been able to maintain that, that priority over the past seven-plus months and even into this year. So I'm very happy with that. And I think above all else, I'm very thankful for the partnership that we have with Cedric County, and that's really allowed us to keep all of our staff working here at the zoo. And I know they're all very thankful for that, too. So I just wanted to make sure I, I made a point of, of saying that this morning, that all of the staff here at the zoo are very grateful for the partnership that we have with Cedric County. Prior to the, the pandemic hitting, we had launched three of our capital improvement projects. And even though, even though everything else that we had planned came to a halt, we did need to go through and finish those three projects. The upper left-hand photo, we made a major renovation over at the Belt. Part of that was, in terms of water conservation, you may recall that that was three kind of island exhibits that were surrounded by water. We drained all the moats, busted out the concrete, literally brought in tons of soil and made that into one large mixed exhibit. And I'll show you some of the new inhabitants here in a few slides, but very nice exhibit that I think that our guests are going to enjoy this coming year. Over in the amphibian reptile building, the photo in the upper right, the area that used to be the former open exhibit, we added in an exhibit wall with nine new exhibits and allows us ten species total because one of the exhibits has two species living together. But it's in addition to our venomous gallery, which has been well-received. And I think what's most amazing about it is that it looks seamless with the rest of the building, that the construction looks like it was put in in nineteen seventy-four when the building opened. So I think that if you were a first-time guest, you wouldn't even realize that we just put this in in 2020. And then the final project, over at the event field, we put in another pavilion. It's an area we use during Zuba Lee. This really helps because, as many of you know, we typically get rain the week before Zuba Lee, and this turns into a swamp. So now we've been able to elevate this area on a concrete pad. We've got IT capabilities there, electricity, lighting, et cetera. So not only is it going to be good during Zuba Lee, but it'll be a new rental facility for us for company picnics, family reunions, et cetera. So we're, we're very excited to have these three things completed and ready for our guests to enjoy. Starting in November, we always host Winter Wednesdays for three dollars, and that continues through the month of February. So on the really good days, we get lots of people out there. We'll see what happens today, since it is Wednesday, whether our, our numbers are high or not, but this is a great opportunity for people to come out and get a reduced admission. Kind of along those same lines, as you know, we've had timed ticket entry to the zoo since reopening on May the eighteenth. We figured out early on that with, you know, a hundred and fifteen developed acres and twenty thousand plus linear feet of pathways, that we could have about thirty-three hundred guests in here at any one time, and that's keeping them six foot apart. Well, we know that would never happen, but that was a good figure for us to base our calculations on. One of the things we've also realized is that fifty-two percent of our, our visits are from members. And so with that in mind, and over six months of data under our belts since reopening, we were able to adjust our reservation schedule so that our membership doesn't have to make reservations prior coming to the zoo. We've never maxed out any of our timed slots outside of the fact that most of those were members in the mornings. We use that data to help us make this decision, but this has been very well-received by zoo members. Few animal updates. I mentioned the, the new mixed species exhibit over at the African Belt. There's going to be a number of species that will be living together there, the warthogs, grevy zebra. We added two additional grevy zebra from the Miami Zoo that just arrived a few months ago. We also have three naiela antelope. It's a new species for us here at the zoo. They're native to South Africa, so you're going to see those out there in the very near future. We're also integrating a couple bird species, marabu stork. And then this photo in the upper right-hand corner is of a pair of, of blue cranes that we received from the National Zoo in Washington, DC. We've had them in the collection before, but it's been a long time. The birds have already been, been out there getting used to the exhibit, and we've been slowly introducing the different hoofed animals. But by the time spring hits, we'll have all those species out there together. So we think it'll be a very dynamic exhibit for our guests. Over at the amphibian reptile building, back in September, we hatched out five Chinese alligators. This is the second year in a row that we've hatched this species. This is probably one of the most critically endangered crocodilians in the world. There's only about a hundred and fifteen of them remaining in the Yangtze River Valley in China, and there's a hundred in human care. So you, you can tell by those figures that there's almost as many in human care as there are remaining in the wild. This was a recommended breeding from the Species Survival Plan for the Chinese alligator, and this is a very highly genetically valuable pair that we've bred the last two years. So we're very happy about this, this breeding effort and the fact that we're able to contribute to the sustainability of this population overall. We've also been undertaking a lot of new training. In this photo on the left, Dr. Katie Hall, who's there near the head of the giraffe, she was hired over a year ago. She's our new coordinator of animal welfare and in Richmond and training. And she'd been working with our different animal keeper staffs. In this particular case, training the giraffes for hoof monitoring. And you can see here on the right, for the first time in our history, we've actually been able to get an X-ray on a live giraffe foot. So this is all very exciting. It allows us to really maintain their, their hoof, hoof health, and we're doing the same thing over to COPI. We're actually planning to bring in some experts in this field from the Hoggle Zoo in Salt Lake City to help us with some additional training of this nature. So all very exciting. With 2020 in the, the rearview mirror, we're really looking forward to 2021 for a number of reasons, but most particular is that it's our fiftieth birthday. So we have a lot of things planned for this year, and I'm going to share a few of those with you now. As you know, we have the new front entrance and administration complex under construction. It's moving at a very fast pace from both inside the zoo as well as out in the parking lot. They're working from all directions. We're still on schedule for this facility to be completed in May and to open, so that'll be the kind of kickoff of our birthday celebration. In this photo here, you can see the new two-story administration building on the right, and then the zoo store on, on the left side, and then the entry gates right down the center. Kind of a close-up of administration building. I think one of the most striking things is this canopy you see here, and this will actually house our solar panels that will generate electricity for the building. We're going to have bifacial solar panels on this facility that will not only collect solar radiation from above, but anything that hits the pavement will be picked up from the underside of the panels as well. The other nice thing is that this will have the capability in the future that we'll be able to put battery backup in to store electricity as well for power outages, et cetera. The other thing that we're really proud about with both of these buildings is that we've really used as much green construction as possible. We use Thermomax kind of covering that's behind all the stonework you see there, which is basically a really thick styrofoam. It's really going to help us with our cooling and heating. In fact, they've got some portable heaters in there that this stuff is so, so tight in terms of the envelope on the building that the workers, yesterday, as cold as it was outside, were in there walking around in T-shirts. So we don't even have the thing completely sealed up yet. So I think that that kind of gives you an indication of how well insulated this building is. The other thing that we're putting on both of these buildings, and we're the first in the region to do this, is bird-safe glass. As a conservation organization, it didn't make a lot of sense to have all of this glass and not protect migrating birds that come through this region. We know that glass accounts for a lot of mortality in birds throughout the entire U.S., so we wanted to set a new standard here by putting in bird-safe glass. So it was one of the things we didn't budge on during the design phase, is to make sure we were doing the right thing from a conservation perspective. On the interior of the building, drywall is going up. This is on the first floor. This is looking from the zoo side, where you see those pillars down the center. That's going to be the whole new membership area, kind of the indentured area there. To the, to the left will be the recognition wall. There'll also be some seating there for There'll also be some seating there for families while they're, you know, getting their membership taken care of. This is the actual ticketing area in the front of the building. There'll be six-ticket windows. Those are the areas that have the wood on them at the moment. We move to the second floor. This kind of shows kind of the big, open work area. That room that you see straight ahead will be one of the conference rooms we'll have there. So this is really coming together very rapidly. But more so is the zoo store off to the south side. They got an earlier start on that project. It will probably finish up in the next month or so. You can see from this particular vantage point, we have what I call the Macy's window on the front, where we're going to be able to display a lot of the products that we have for sale on the interior. On the far-left side of this photo, we have a restroom on the outside because we know good and well that once somebody leaves the zoo, they need a bio break. We have the opportunity for that. Or if they're waiting online to get into the zoo on the opposite side, they can also come over here and use the restrooms. In this same area, we have a, what we're calling pet parking. It's an area that people can put their dog or their cat if they're traveling from outside the area. We don't want them leaving their pets in their vehicles, so we have an area where they'll be able to come in and put their dog or their cat. We're probably one of the few zoos that I know in the country that offer that opportunity. But one of the things that came out of our strategic plan two years ago is we want to try to draw people from outside of our 100-mile radius. And this kind of, you know, alludes to that, that we know that people that are traveling across the country in their RV usually have their cat or their dog are both with them. So we're at least providing an opportunity for that. When you go on the inside, as I mentioned earlier, it really is coming to completion very fast. The carpet's down, the walls have been painted, the slat wall is up. There's over 400 lights in this building. They're all LED, so they're high, you know, efficiency. We also have the cloud ceiling that I'll have a better shot of here in a minute. Here you see some of the light wall panels. All of the paintings you see here were done by our elephants. So we've kind of put our own personal touch on the interior of the gift shop, or as we're calling it now, the zoo store. Here's kind of a better image showing the cloud, what kind of, basically what that is, is a suspended ceiling there, which really is quite dramatic. It's changed even since these photos were taken last week. It literally changes by the day. And then on the exterior, on the zoo side, this is one of the finished public restrooms, which are very nice, kind of following suit with all of our green initiatives. We have high-efficiency Dyson hand dryers in all of our restrooms, LED lights throughout the entire complex. So it's coming together very rapidly, and we're excited to open this in late May. We also broke ground on our new snow leopard and amerleopard exhibit at the end of November. This exhibit is taking shape very, very rapidly. Here shows the area just north of Tiger Trek. This is the area that used to be the Asian Walk Through Forest. This will be the site of the new leopard exhibit. Looks completely different, all leveled out. You can see here, they put in the footings for some of the ramp walls that I'll show you in a few images here in a minute, as well as the footings for the actual care facility. This was as of yesterday, but they're actually starting to lay the concrete blocks that will support the ramps that provide the cats' access in and out of these exhibits, as well as behind this tent you see here. The front wall of the care facility is already in place. So by March, most of this facility will really have taken shape. At this point, we're hoping to open this in mid-July, probably right after the Fourth of July in that kind of timeframe. We do have some renderings from the architect that show what this exhibit will look like when it's completed. This will be the gateway. As you enter the exhibit from the north, you'll notice that we have several opportunities for the cats to cross over between their netted canopies that will allow them to come across the public pathways. This, one of these is right here at the gateway. When you get down to the actual observation building and where the care facility is located, you can see the ramps that I was mentioning in the previous slides that will allow the cats' access down from this central observation building into a given habitat. Within the observation building, at about 12-foot above your head, the cats are going to have access and will be able to move around and access into respective habitats. So the two species will have access on any given day to two of these netted canopies. One of the things I should mention is that what we're going to have when this is completed is 10 times the size of our current leopard exhibit. So we're going from a 1,600-square-foot exhibit to over 17,000 square feet. Both of these cats are endangered. The amerleopard in particularly is a critically endangered species. There's only about 100 of those remaining in Far East Russia. We're going to be able to hold up to 10 cats here, which will be great for population sustainability. So we're very excited about what this exhibit is going to offer. As part of this project, we're also extending the tiger viewing node in the east tiger habitat. You can kind of see that in the far distance of the image on the screen. It'll double the size of the current viewing node, and this next image kind of gives you a view from inside that extended node. So it's going to be very exciting. You can have tigers around you on three sides here at the glass. And this last image here kind of gives you an overhead perspective looking from the current tiger track into this whole new exhibit area for both snow leopards and amerleopards. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, you're really going to be able to see this take shape in the next couple of months, and we're very excited to have this open in the midsummer. And then to kind of round out our birthday celebration, we're going to be hosting the Tianyu Chinese Lantern Festival. It's life-size lanterns of animals. This particular festival has been held at a number of AZA zoos around the country and has been very well received. To our knowledge, there's never been anything like this in the Wichita region, so we're excited to host this. We think it's a very fitting way to close out our 50th birthday celebration. We're hoping to be running this in the months of October and November this year. So stay tuned for more details on that. It's going to be a very exciting year. Kind of giving you a highlight of three of the things that will be a big part of our birthday celebration. There'll be a few other surprises, and we're hoping to have Zuba Lee back on site as part of our birthday celebration as well. So with that, I thank you for your attention and the opportunity to speak with you this morning.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Dennis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome this morning. Dr. Etlin, we appreciate you being here with the update. There are exciting things happening at the zoo. We are very proud to be partners with the zoo, the number-one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas, and the things that you're doing is going to make it even greater. There's a lot going on. There are a lot of plans for the future. The master plan going forward has a number of things that are going to make that zoo even more exciting. One of the things that's coming up here, I think Friday, the date changes regularly, but there's going to be kind of a partnership with the city of Wichita with their new water treatment plant in the zoo and Cedric County to... I don't know if you want to talk about what's going to happen, hopefully Friday. That's the latest date that I've got on the gorilla naming contest.
Yeah, we're excited to be, you know, partners with this whole event. You know, probably some of the things that I'll mention on Friday at this naming is that, you know, all life depends on water, and with over 3,400 animals here, we really depend on water. So it's really, really critical to have good, clean water, and so we're really excited about, you know, partnering with this naming opportunity for this mascot they're going to have, and should prove to be a very exciting day in weeks to come.
Very good. Well, finally, just not too long ago, a little over a year and a half, we had the groundbreaking, although it didn't happen exactly like we hoped, but we did have a groundbreaking for what you're doing. Anyone that's ever been over to your offices that you're currently working out of, they'll find that the restrooms are in the same place as your heaters and your water heaters and so forth. So your staff has something definitely to look forward to in the new facility. But it wasn't just Cedric County that made that happen. Your zoo board is absolutely fantastic, probably the best board I've ever worked with, and they're the ones that went out and found the funding in order to be able to do, put together this new zoo entrance and all of the different exhibits that you're talking about. So I do want to make sure that I congratulate you, your staff, and the zoo board for the fantastic work that they're doing.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I completely agree. We have a wonderful board, and I can't imagine working with a better group of people. They're so supportive of everything that we're doing out here. I can tell you that I think it's very fitting to put a new front entry on the zoo at 50 years of age. As I like to say, we're really growing up, you know, in terms of, you know, the look that we're going to have on the front of the zoo. I think that it really reflects what the exhibits are like once you enter the zoo. I think that, you know, guests that have been here in the past that came through our former entry, we heard often that, wow, we had no idea that the zoo looked like this on the inside because you used to have to go through those two little tunnels and through the berm, and now you're going to have this big 80-foot expanse, you know, that you're going to be very inviting to welcome you into the zoo. So we're very excited to put this front entry, you know, new front entry complex in place. It'll be easy to find all the zoo staff, you know, administrative staff now because we're going to be right at the front of the zoo rather than scattered around four places in the zoo. I'm excited to have my entire team on the same floor together. I think it's going to improve communications even more. So I'm very excited, as is everyone else. I think as we've started touring the facility over the past few weeks, and you can start to see the shape of the building with the drywall going in, that everybody is really excited now to move into that new facility.
Again, thank you very much for being here this morning. I just got a text from your zoo board president, and she thanks you for everything that you're doing and congratulates you and the entire staff and the board. Again, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and thank you, Commissioner Dennis, for serving on that board, representing the commission. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Etlin, thank you for the presentation. It's exciting to see the progress at the zoo, and I'm really excited to see the new entrance and the other things you've talked about today, and I think the community is going to be sharing that excitement as well. I assume you're going to have some type of a ribbon cutting in May or when this opening, the front gate is complete? Is that, is there a plan to celebrate that for the community, or what's the plan there?
Yeah, we most definitely want to do some kind of celebration. We're kind of waiting to see what COVID does and whether we have to do that in a series of three or four, you know, openings and then a final ribbon cutting, you know. I guess time will tell, but we definitely want to do a ribbon cutting. There's no doubt about that. We're hoping by the time that Leopard opens in the midsummer, that maybe, you know, vast majority of the population will be vaccinated, and we can do that opening more similar to what we have in the past. But I guess we're just kind of going to follow suit with whatever COVID does.
That's great to know that. And it's been a while since I've looked at the master plan, and so I apologize for my poor memory here, but did the Phase 1 of the master plan include a train, electric train, I believe?
It does include a train. It's the next thing on our, you know, on our docket of things to do. We have that, and then an event center near the front of the zoo. Both of those will, you know, will provide additional revenue for the zoo. So we're, you know, we're excited to look at those once we get past this new front-entry complex completion, as well as Leopard, is to look at getting a train in place as well as this event center.
So right now, is there funding for those projects, or is that something that's still being worked out?
For the train? No, we don't have any funding at the current time for the train. We had originally thought about that as part of the campaign that we had for the front-entry in Leopard, and then when COVID hit, it obviously changed everything, so we kind of downsized our plans a bit. But as I mentioned a minute ago, as soon as we have the opportunity to start looking at getting the train in place, we're going to do so.
Thank you. That's an exciting part of the plan, so I was looking forward to hearing some status on that, but I'll wait for when the zoo's ready to share that information. I'll be excited at that time as well. Just want to say thank you for your leadership. I think that, from my perspective, it looks like the zoo is thriving, and I think that you have a lot to do with that. So thank you for your service to this community. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Doctor, for being here today. My daughters and I frequent Cedric County Park. We walk around, and we have seen the progress of the entrance, and I'm excited to actually be able to go in it. I know that that's been a long time coming, so I'm excited for you and your staff and appreciate all you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Doctor, I appreciate again the presentation and all the comments from the commission, and good luck with a successful 2021. Should be an exciting year for the 50th anniversary.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to receive and file the zoo update. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners Tom Stills, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items G through V this morning.
Okay. Commissioners, you've received consent items G through V, as in Victor. I'll make a motion. If there's no comments, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items G through V.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Be in no comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoun, anything on legislative items?
Mr. Chairman, I think Keem will begin this, and then I'll jump in.
Okay. All right, Keem.
Good morning. All right, so we do have a, an agenda now. We do have a legislative agenda scheduled, so it looks like the first day of session is actually going to be January 11th with some key dates. I'd like to kind of bring your attention to. Kate just gave you guys a printout. I can also send you a digital copy through email for your records as well. Key dates, so the first day of session is January 11th. We've got a number of bills that have already been prefilled that we're working with Senator Carolyn McGinn on, who is, I mentioned a couple weeks ago, is Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. And so we've got our nuisance abatement, as well as our charter commission bills, which she will help introduce in those committees. We've already seen widespread support and hope introducing them together. So what our contract lobbyist, Jason Watkins, wants to do is introduce both those bills together, so that they will follow through the Senate and hopefully go to the House thereafter, hopefully fast-tracking both of the bills so that we can get these passed early on in session. The turnaround period is the next kind of big date that I'd like to bring your attention to, and that's actually going to be in March for us. This is usually the date that if bills do not pass out of their House of origin, for us, it's going to be the Senate. That's when they die. We feel very confident that both of our bills will actually be out of the Senate and over to the House before that deadline. There is some uncertainty at this point of how the legislative session's going to look, meaning lawmakers will be in Topeka, but public comment, those in the public chairs have also been removed from committee chambers. So at this point, we don't think that public comment's going to happen in person, but could happen through Zoom or through WebEx of some sort. And as vaccines continue to roll out, there is a possibility that public will be able to actually go in. So for those who want to address lawmakers, it will probably either be by Zoom or by WebEx at this point. There's an update to the property tax bill. So late last night, I spoke with Jason on the property tax bill, as you guys know, did pass last year. We expect that bill to again pass this year. This is the bill that Governor Kelly vetoed. You know, this is an extremely fast process at this point. According to Jason, we expect this to be heard on the second day of session, so this will move very, very quickly. A key point of this bill would be that the bill would be retroactive if passed January 1st of this year, so that's an important date to remember. As far as other legislative updates, last night, the South Central Kansas Legislative delegation did meet on a public forum. It was a very good forum, my first one, actually listening on to. There were a number of constituents who actually did address lawmakers last night and asked for a couple of things that I made notes of for you all today. They asked for consideration for increasing funding for mental health care services. There were several constituents who asked for the expansion of Medicaid, decriminalizing marijuana across the state, increase awareness and funding for minority community businesses, and reducing COVID-19 among those communities. And then last, but certainly not least, economic recovery of some sort, whether that's pushing our state lawmakers to continue funding, pushing funding down to the local level, and making sure that we help those small businesses continue to... making sure that we help those small businesses continue to thrive and grow in 2021. Tomorrow, Chairman Meitzner will speak during the legislators' delegation forum, which is, as you know, is usually held in person at WSU, but because of COVID, will be virtual this year, much like last night's event was. The meeting starts at 9:30. I will be on to listen to that, and it will end a little after noon tomorrow. Those are the updates I have. I can stand for questions on my items, but I think Mr. Papoon has a couple as well.
If I could just, Mike Papoon, County Counselor, follow up on a couple of things that Akeem mentioned. Yes, that tax bill that has been talked about frequently by the board, and in particular by Commissioner Howell, is being fast-tracked right now. We need to take a serious look at it. I'm meeting with Lindsey later today to take a look at the draft that's already been filed and is going to be heard next Tuesday. And the concerning part is, we've got to make sure this bill is livable because they're making it retroactive to January 1 of this year. So I think previous drafts of the bill gave us a little bit of time to prepare for the bill, but so we'll be working with the clerk and treasurer and finance on looking at that bill. The other thing I wanted to mention is, if you remember from a couple of sessions ago, we got a bill passed. It was a high priority for Sedgwick County that dealt with the vote-anywhere legislation. A key component of that bill was that the Secretary of State would have to adopt rules and regulations enacting that would allow that process to take place. Those rules and regulations have been drafted by the Secretary of State. They've been submitted to the Attorney General for his review. Those have been reviewed by the Attorney General, and there's a draft out there now that is going to have to stand up to public comment for a period of time, but then those regulations will go into effect. And we will need to look at those regulations, weigh in if there are issues involving them, but they could impact when and how we are able to conduct the vote-anywhere legislation in this county. Those are the things I'd add at this point from my end.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Akeem. Commissioner Howell has a question or a comment?
Thank you, Chairman. So back to the property tax bill. Since we don't know right now what our opportunities will be to testify, I think they have to allow us to testify one way or the other. I mean, at least written, I would anticipate at least a virtual appearance before that committee. Do we, right now, do we have plans of attending that in some way? Do you want this to be from the entire commission, or is this going to be one of our members? Or how do we plan to do that?
We got a notice from Jason Watkins about two hours ago.
Okay.
So we haven't developed a plan yet, but we're going to have some ideas for you later today, I'm sure, after I talk to Lindsey.
I think that the biggest concern I have with the bill, as written, potentially are the dates that are contained within it. I think that the workability of the logistics of how this is going to work, I think, needs to be reviewed strongly by the commission or by the county staff. But if we are going to submit some type of position on this, I would like to have a chance to review that. Again, it looks like our hearing date will be the 12th of January. Today is already being the 6th. That means we only have about three days, workdays, to do this. And so I guess I would like to have an opportunity to be part of that review, or at least see what we're planning, how we're planning to engage this bill at the hearing level. So I would love to have the chance to do that, extend my desire there. I did also listen to the forum last night, and want to say thank you to the legislators for putting that together. I think it actually worked very well. It was done through Zoom meeting, and I think it was a really, it was a very, very good meeting. I just want to say thank you to them for putting that up, and I loved listening to it. So that's all I've got. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, so thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
And the update. So Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Okay, under other, I will kick off other with, and Mr. Glasscock, or Commissioner Glasscock, you have also hit your light to say a few words, but what we have here is an appreciation of your service in as limited as it was. You will have a nice, plaque says, "For your dedication and commitment to serving District 2 and the people of Sedgwick County. Dalton Glasscock, County Commission, District 2, from 2020 to 2021."
Fantastic.
But, I mean, we've probably all got a quick thank you or a comment for you, but we'll let you speak first. And you bet.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for that, Commissioner, and thank you for that staff as well, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give some final remarks. As I begin my final week as Commissioner, I leave knowing that our county is in very good hands because we've lived up to our Kansas values, "At Astra Por Aspra, to the stars through difficulties." This motto in Kansas tells the history of our great state, but it also embodies all this past year's brought us. And over the course of this past month, I've had the unique opportunity to experience the workings of local government and sooner turn to the private sector carrying your stories with me. To our citizens, there's often no difference between a federal, state, county, or city government, and many may think they never interact with the county government operations, but this past year's shown the entire world how critical local government is. I've seen the challenge our first responders and correctional facilities face due to the close contact they often have and how they implemented mitigation strategies in record time. I witnessed the election office meet the task of conducting an election in the midst of a pandemic and one of the most divisive times in our history, and walk away having the confidence of our public. I've toured the zoo, exploration place, and interest bank arena, and I left inspired seeing how our community partners have stepped up to help our families through remote learning, using their facilities to pass out PPE, and also how they safely open their doors to maintain our quality of life. I've spent hours talking with the park department and hearing the stories that span decades, and I've seen our fleet and realized how they are the glue that holds many of our operations together. This is what local government is. I don't have the time to talk about department after department that has pushed through challenges of their own and how they continue to ensure that county operations run smoothly, but one thing I've noticed is the institutional knowledge of this organization, and there's not one place that I have visited where someone didn't have decades of experience and could tell stories and people well before I was even born. You are the experts, and this body needs to lean on you, trust you, and make decisions with your stories and experiences in mind. Commissioner Howell, I've enjoyed the chance to talk in detail about so many problems and possible solutions in our community and for your attention to data, facts, and finding root issues. I've enjoyed our friendship over the many years and know that you truly care for so many people in this community, evident most recently by your project to administer COVID tests yourself throughout our community, traversing really across our entire county. Commissioner Dennis, your institutional knowledge and the expertise you bring to this is something this county should be incredibly grateful for, and I enjoyed the chance to get to know you more on a personal level over this past month, and thank you for being someone that I can lean on. Chairman Meitzner, your mentorship and guidance have been immensely helpful, and your wisdom is something I take into heart. When you speak, people listen, and you're a leader that I'm grateful that you were chairman during my short time, and your ability and willingness to bring people together is something I think a lot more people could learn from. Commissioner Cruz, your passion and heart for this community is displayed in each and everything you say. You bring a perspective that needs to be heard, and I know that you'll vigorously and unapologetically stand for your beliefs, and I always love watching your Facebook videos. Commissioner-elect Lopez, if you're listening, I want to paraphrase a hero of mine. Your success is now our county's success, and I'm rooting hard for you. From the chance I've had to interact, I know that you have a heart for service and a love for this community, and I look forward to getting to know you more over the coming term. To Carol and Lisa, who normally listen to all these broadcasts, walking to the office on day one and each day after, your kindness, smiles, warm hellos mean the world. You bring joy to each person you meet, and your years of experience is something so valuable to this commission that words can't describe it. To Lindsey and Mike, you've been the data and go-to advice people, and the work that you do makes sure our doors stay open and that our community can trust that everything we do is in transparent manner, and you make sure that people can trust our local government. To Tom and to Tanya, you're both rock stars, and it's because of your leadership and management that our county is one of the finest places to live, work, play, pray, and raise a family, and every single person should know how fortunate we are to have you as our county and assistant county manager. I will very much miss your guidance and advice as well. In the 40 days I've had, I've had the honor of sitting in this seat. I've attended over 87 meetings, constituent service visits, community events, council meetings, and community department tours. I've not wasted a single moment to learn more about this community I love. Only in Sedgwick County could I go from visiting the juvenile detention facility to the zoo, back to the forensic science department, and end with a meeting with the finance team. To the staff at Sedgwick County, I wish I've had more chance to meet each one of you and thank you personally for all the sacrifices you and your family have made. And to those I've met and I've had the chance to talk to, you've been the highlight of this job. It's been an honor to serve the citizens of District 2 as Commissioner, and I know that Commissioner-elect Lopez will serve this community well, and that you will all enjoy meeting her as much as I have. The new year brings new, unique challenge of its own, but I'm a firm believer that our best days lie ahead. I believe, because I've met so many of you, that our county will think inevitably, inspire those around us, ignite the untapped potential in our community. So thank you for the opportunity to address this body. Thank you for the chance to be here, and that's all I have to say.
All right, a couple of comments. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and those are great comments. Thank you for that summary of what you did in 40 days. I was going to just say, in 40 days, you spent a lot of money, and you did. In fact, your presence here was really important, and we had some really difficult issues to sort through, and you were present in every way. Your ethical leadership was noted. In 40 days, I would just say you were one of the busiest people I've ever known. I had a hard time getting on your schedule, and you were here all the time, early and late, unless you were out doing some type of community visit, and I want to say that your hard work was duly noted. You were a very good commissioner for the 40 days that you were here, and your professionalism is inspiring. Thank you for what you've done for Sedgwick County.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Nice comments. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Dalton, Commissioner, I want to thank you very much for your service to our community. I got to know Dalton back when he was running for the Chair of the Sedgwick County Republican Party. I had an opportunity as the precinct committee man to vote for him, and that was a very wise vote. I appreciate your service to our community during that period of time. Thank you for everything you've done, and you are the future of our leadership in this county, in the state and the nation. One thing that I learned in the military very quickly is that no one is irreplaceable, and so we have to start growing the people that are going to take over when we're gone. And you're one of the people that are going to take over as all of the rest of us that you see with a little bit more gray hair or some of us not too much hair are moving on to other pursuits. Somehow, our chairman took a...
Thank you, thank you. For letting me be a part of this.
Anyway, your leadership is shown brightly, and it's going to show brightly in the future. We sincerely appreciate it. The other thing that I want to make sure that I address is that we want to welcome Commissioner-elect Lopez to this bench next week. When we meet, she will be already sworn in, and she will be a full member. I know that we've already been going through giving her orientations, and we're very much looking forward to her. But again, Commissioner Glasscock, thank you very much for your service to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Dalton, I love your nonpartisan attitude. I think that you have really shown that this is about people and not about party politics. I have really enjoyed the fact that you reach across party lines to show the citizens, to show your fellow Republicans that it's okay to talk to Democrats, and it's okay to be friends and get along. I have really enjoyed the fact that you are bold and brave in your efforts to do so because not a lot of people are. And in this hyper-partisan world that we find ourselves in right now, we need so many more people like you. So as much as I'm excited about Commissioner-elect Lopez to join us, I have really enjoyed the time that you've been here. You ask great questions. You are such a hard worker, and congratulations to you for all that you've accomplished in these short days. So I hope that, you know, we'll stay in touch, and I just really feel like the nonpartisan attitude that you have, I hope it infects others with just your attitude. So thank you for everything that you've done. I'll miss you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm reminded I need to, one small note is, we do have the oath of office ceremony that will be virtual this Sunday at 1:00. So there's a lot of people are grateful that the Chiefs have a bye this Sunday, so we can all attend and watch diligently. Anyway, that's at 1:00, and again, our congratulations to Commissioner-elect Sarah Lopez, and we all look forward to her there. But Dalton, I can tell you personally, I've heard a lot of people mention 40 days. The only other 40 days I know is Lent, and that's usually sacrifice. But so maybe you've sacrificed your 40 days with our Sedgwick County community, and there have been a lot said, and I echo all of those comments, and I wish you the most sincere, brightest future, and I would venture to say that we have not heard the last from Dalton Glasscock in the local political and local representation of our community. You will serve our community well no matter what you do. So my sincere thank you and congratulations. Okay, with that, we do not have executive session, and I don't think we have anything other to share, so we will stand adjourned from our first meeting of the year.